Hi, I'm Robin Scholz and welcome to the Hoover Channel. Don't forget to hit the subscribe button so that you're always alerted when we have a new video. Thanks.
... sites worldwide every year, whereas the mission of Reefs Across America is to remember the fallen, to honor those that served, and to teach the next generation about the value of freedom. And whereas each year, Reefs Across America chooses a new theme to help supporters focus their messaging and outreach in their own communities, and has chosen the theme for 2022 to be "Find a Way to Serve." And whereas each year, this mission is carried out by the coordination of wreath-laying ceremonies at cemeteries in all 50 states and overseas. And whereas Curry-Jefferson Cemetery is Hoover's participating location for Reefs Across America, and whereas the American Legion Ryan Winslow posts 911 in Hoover is the coordinating organization for wreath placement at Curry-Jefferson Cemetery, now therefore, we, Mayor Frank V. Brigado and City Council President John V. Leida do hereby proclaim December 17th, 2022, as Reefs Across America Day in Hoover, Alabama, and encourage all citizens to observe this day.
And we have a poster contest. And Annabeth, are you here? Where's Annabeth? General Polkapani is going to come up and help us distribute some well-earned certificate to some young people here tonight, so come on in.
Good evening, everyone. I'm General Paul Polkapani, the chairman of the Hoover Veterans Committee. This year, as every year, this was our 18th year to have our Veterans Day kickoff. It was on a Sunday. We had a great turnout, and it's a week-long celebration. And we have a lot of volunteers, of course, the city offices, we couldn't do it without it, the library, they are instrumental in doing what they do, people like Annabeth here, that they get all the work done. And Mayor Brigado was there, gave a speech, and we recognized seven individuals, received a flag of the United States' flag that was flown over the state Capitol. So we, as I said, it's kind of hard to believe we've been doing this for 18 years now, and it's, today, we're going to recognize, we've got a packed house, we've got a lot of young men and women in here that have made posters, and a lot of people that have supported us throughout the year, I guess, and the years, but we're going to recognize them tonight. Annabeth?
All right, good evening, everyone. My name is Annabeth Reese, and I'm a children's librarian just across the way, and I have Jeremy Davis here, he's the head of the children's department, and it is our delight, like General Polkapani said, to recognize these students that helped make our city's tribute to veterans a success. So we're going to start with the Thank a Vet poster contest winners. Now, these guys submitted their posters and were selected to be displayed in the library in the month of November. So guys, whenever I call your name, come up, and you're going to receive your certificate and your poster, so you're going to get your artwork back from Mr. Jeremy here. And if you guys wouldn't mind just staying up here with these lovely gentlemen, and we're going to take your picture once everybody has come down here. So let's get started with Laney Collier. Ella Kate Cullen. Jackson Foreman, I know he wasn't able to make it tonight, but we'll give him a round of applause anyway. Chrissette Hatter. And Millie Jenkins. And I know Tori Lee couldn't be here, but we'll give her a round of applause as well. Sophia Rothel. Anaya Wilson and her sister Ava Wilson, I know they couldn't be here tonight, but give them a round of applause. And Elizabeth Zamora couldn't be here tonight either, but we'll finish with her with a big round of applause. Good job, you guys. That's everyone.
Okay, parents, come take your pictures.
Yeah. Good job, everyone. You guys can make your way back to your parents. All right, so up next, we're going to recognize the Hoover JROTC that they did such a wonderful job doing the flag folding ceremony at the Thank a Vet kickoff program. I'm always so amazed with the respect that they do their duty, and we just really appreciate them. So let's start with James Detling. And Nia Settles. And Olivia Robinson as well, she's not here tonight, but we're going to give her a round of applause.
And thank you for the entire Veterans Committee that works tirelessly to make that a great event every year. Thank you, General.
As I said, we have a lot of support from the city. Thank you, guys, for what you guys do.
Yes, sir. Thank you. We are privileged tonight to have the executive and management team from Sports Facilities Management here. It's become our custom, once a year in the month of December, to welcome them to the chamber and hear an annual report on the performance of the Hoover Met Complex. So I'm happy to welcome Mr. Shannon Ely, who's the general manager of the Hoover Met Complex, along with Jason Clement, CEO of SFM, and I'll introduce the rest of their team. Gentlemen, thank you.
Good evening. Thank you so much for the opportunity. We're certainly excited to be here. When I started nine months ago and went through my interview process and met with corporate and also with the advisory committee, there were five things that really came out of those discussions that we wanted to move towards. And the first was, we wanted to increase our collaboration and partnership with the Hoover Parks and Recreation Department. We wanted to be a cohesive, united team. The second is, we wanted to build a strong and talented team. Third was to improve our culture. We wanted to show up every day. We wanted to work hard, but we wanted to have fun. Fourth is implement process and structure so that we were operating with maximum efficiency in implementing best practices. And then fifth was to provide exceptional service to this community as well as grow the bottom line. So I'm happy to report that I think that we've made significant progress to those goals. We're certainly not there yet, but have a lot of momentum, and I'm excited to kind of hit on some of the high points of this past fiscal year. So what I wanted to do quickly tonight was just kind of go over our fiscal year review for '21, '22, go over the usage reports, the in-kind value, economic impact, and the financial performance, and then we'll touch on some of the things to look forward going ahead. So from a community usage, which is very important to the city of Hoover, pleased to report that we had over 82,000 people visit the Hoover Met Complex. As you can see, the breakdown there, walking track was over 13,000, pickleball continues to be strong in the Finley Center, tennis, summer camp, and then, without question, our explored playground and splash pad is very popular for the four months that we're open a year, having achieved an attendance of over 46,000 people. And then from a local sports usage, we had over 125,000 people. You can see here, from a baseball and softball field standpoint, baseball practice was our number one. Baseball and softball fields generated about 11,000 participants. Finley Center was about 53,000, with a lot of that coming from Parks and Rec, and then the multipurpose, almost 60,000, with a lot of that coming from the Hoover Soccer Club and Parks and Rec Flag Football. And then this statistic is something that we're certainly very proud of. For our events and attendance and tournaments, we were fortunate to have over a quarter of a million people come to our facility, which is obviously the economic driver for the city. These are the events that put people in hotels, in the restaurants, all that kind of good stuff. You can see from an indoor standpoint, you know, our top event attractors at this point are basketball, volleyball, and the trade shows. And then from an outdoor standpoint, baseball and soccer are our leading activities. So this is an in-kind report that we do, and we calculate each year, just to talk a little bit about some of the amounts that we provide where we don't charge rental for the Hoover Met Complex. This year, we provided about $600,000 worth of in-kind value. On the left, you'll see how it was broken down by organization between the city, Parks and Rec, school, and other. Other is going to be like the SEC Baseball Tournament, SEC Fan Fest, and then World Games Softball that we hosted. And then on the right-hand side, you'll see how that breaks out, that 589,000 breaks out over area of complex, with the majority of that at the stadium and in the Finley Center. Total economic impact for this past fiscal year was just over $55 million. That is down about $13 million from a year ago. The primary reasons for that is because we did host World Games Softball. Perfect Game had to relocate three of their big marquee events showcases, they had to go to Memphis with those events. And I want to also point out that these economic impacts do not reflect the SEC Baseball Tournament or World Games, since those are more City of Hoover events. And then, in addition to the World Games, about $4 to $5 million was from the Adidas Gauntlet basketball showcases that did not return this year, as they like to move out or across the country to different venues. So this $55 million represents about 70,000 room nights in the region. All right, talking about the financial performance a little bit, we wanted to just show you kind of how we ended up, actual versus budget. So as you can see here, we exceeded our revenues by about $1.7 million. Our overhead expenses came in about $300,000 less. So we're very pleased to report that our net income reached about $1.1 million compared to a budgeted loss of about $67,000. So very, very proud of that fact. Our team worked hard, I'd like to acknowledge the team that's here in attendance tonight. It was a great effort. And then a profit and loss comparison from fiscal year '21 to fiscal year '22. As you can see, we outpaced revenues. Our cost of goods sold was a little bit more, which is to be expected when your revenues increase. Overhead expenses came in less, which is primarily from some salary savings that we incurred. And then, as you can see, again, the $1.14 compares to about $597 a year ago, but of that $597, there was about $350,000 in there from PPP program. Real proud about our food and beverage growth. We saw about a half a million dollar increase in our gross revenues. $200,000 of that came from the World Games softball. I think the other major component of that is just coming out of COVID and continuing to have more and more visitors on our complex. But Jonathan Danfor, our food and beverage manager, did an outstanding job. And then our RV park, we generated about $100,000 more this fiscal year. That $659,000 accounts for about 8,500 visitors over the course of 12 months. So I wanted to talk a little bit about going forward, and at this time, I want to introduce Jason Clement, who's our founder and CEO of Sports Facilities Companies, to talk a little bit about the trends of the industry and how we are positioned here at the Hoover Met Complex.
Thanks. So I'm just going to take a couple minutes here, talk about what's happening in the industry, especially coming out of the pandemic here. Probably not a surprise to any of us who have grandkids or kids that play sports, but youth sports is just continuing to rise. And there's a lot of data on this screen, but I think what we can take away from it is in every type of sport, team sport, individual sport, mix of both, the trends are that more and more kids are participating and playing sports than they have in previous years. It was already trending that way, but the pandemic has just accentuated that a bit. And obviously, what that means here at the Hoover Met Complex, as we look at 2023 and beyond, is we want to position ourselves to take advantage of the very best events and tournaments that are run across the country, and we also want to provide the space and time for as many local residents here to get to play and participate also. So a couple of things that we're looking at from that perspective. Similarly, here, you can see the growth of sports tourism in particular. No surprise, 2020 took a major step back when, you know, a lot of the country was shut down, and you can see that 2021 came back in a pretty significant way. 2022 numbers right now are trending to outpace 2019 and keep the overall pace and trajectory up from that standpoint. I will say this, the city of Hoover, when you look at the country, and certainly the state of Alabama, was one of the first to come back in 2020, and that paid dividends both in 2020 and 2021. We outpaced this. We didn't have nearly the dip that the rest of the country saw as a result of the leadership here locally that allowed us to open up and provide, starting on the outdoor side, events, and then ultimately on the indoor. So Hoover Met Complex was ahead of this curve, and that is why some of the results you've seen, both bottom line and economic impact, continue to outpace what the industry trend is and industry average. And we don't take that for granted. Obviously, it's been a great partnership with the leadership here, and as a result of that, we get to report a positive progress report like you just heard from Shannon. What these are showing, again, is similarly, as sports tourism continues to grow, more and more communities are looking to get in the game. That means more facilities are being developed. So the opportunity for us at the Hoover Met Complex, we collectively, city and SFM collaboratively, have put the complex in a really good place. It's not just the regional destination for youth and amateur sports, it is a national destination. And we have every year, almost all 50 states represented, coming through the complex. We have some mobile device data we haven't bored you with here, but we know exactly where every individual that comes into the geofencing comes from, and they're represented throughout the country, and we can certainly provide some of that as backup to what we're looking at here. So the opportunity, again, in 2023 and beyond, is to maintain and grow that reputation that we already have as a destination. So Shannon's going to talk a little bit about some of those strategies, but just last week, Ashley Whitakers here represents our business development department in the corporate office. We dropped a press release talking about the intersection and partnership, collaboration between Parks and Rec and sports tourism. Hoover Met Complex is a great example of that. Yahoo Finance, a number of other large organizations and news outlets picked that up. So we're going to continue to put the Hoover Met Complex in the center of the industry as a national destination and the national destination for what we're doing. Lastly, then, we're structuring the team and strengthening the team in and around the leadership. So obviously, what you're looking at here is, you know, Hoover, the city of Hoover is the boss. You tell us how to manage this venue. Our job is to execute on your vision, expectations, and definition of success, put a strategic plan in place and execute on that. Our leadership team, led by Shannon Ely, John Sparks, who spent, you know, three to four months of this fiscal year in the general manager seat, so John, thanks for your leadership during that time as well, and myself, are, we get to represent the leadership team, but we really get to hand the ball off to a strengthening team in and around from the corporate office. So I mentioned a little bit the brand and marketing that we have coming on, how we're streamlining some of the information technology that's working. Our national and regional event sales and booking team and the relationships that we have are producing some of these results that we're talking about here. We're strengthening the checks and balances on the accounting and the finance so that we continue to progress and produce the types of financial results that we got to produce here. And then our recruiting and HR team, we have filled a lot of positions with some very talented people at the Hoover Met Complex just in the last year, so we're really proud of the way that that team is coming together. So we thought it might be helpful to do, to define some of the roles here as we embolden and strengthen, not just the team on the ground here locally, but the corporate support and leadership that we're providing to the city of Hoover as well. So that's where we're headed.
Just to talk about a few more things here real quick, wanted to talk about the booking pace that we're on. We were sneaking up on $1 million of booked business on the rental standpoint. All of this on the screen is repeat business. We're in a very advantageous position at this point, where we've got a lot of demand for our facility, and so we get to kind of be selective of what we want to host, what's the most beneficial for the profile for the Hoover economically, tourism, all that kind of good stuff. So as you can see, majority of that business right now has come through the Finley Center with over a half a million dollars booked already. And then really, just to kind of extend on that momentum that we have, I really want to, like I said, we've made great strides. We want to continue that partnership and collaboration with the city of Hoover, with the Parks and Recreation, providing customer service, really being an extension of the city of Hoover is our top priority. We want to continue to make sure that we're providing quality opportunities to the Hoover residents in the local area, as well as bringing in the national events. And then, you know, as every business, we want to increase the revenues and the economic impact. And like I said, we feel like that we're poised to be able to do that. And as Jason mentioned, we've hired a good team, we've built a good team, we've hired about nine out of 15 people over the last four or five months. So we're all starting to get on the same page and very, very excited about what the next year brings. Then lastly, just talk about some of the marketing goals. Annie Metters is here, she's our new community relations and public relations coordinator. So we want to continue to be present in the community from a grassroots standpoint, attending events, being at the chamber functions, making sure that we're visible, telling all the positive things that are happening. And then we want to continue to design and recruit new events. We want to diversify our portfolio. And then, last but not least, you know, the Finley Center and our baseball fields are doing very strong. We want to continue to increase the awareness and the usage of some of our featured offerings, like the climbing center, the tennis facility, our multipurpose fields. And so, like I said, a lot of potential, feel like we've made some great strides, and yet, the best is yet to come. Are there any questions I can answer?
Any questions for Mr. Ely or Mr. Clement?
Mr. President, I have one. In terms of, we looked at the World Games of softball as an opportunity, cost things. Looking at '23 and then into '24 and '25, what kind of return are you seeing on that investment in terms of softball events reaching out to you for either the Met or the baseball fields?
I think softball is by far an untapped resource that we need to recruit more business on. You know, obviously, we have a pretty unique partnership with Perfect Game, but we are strategically working on how to figure out how to recruit more softball events out there, because it is definitely growing fast, and it's a great segment of business.
Yeah, Mr. President, just a couple of quick questions, more so statements. So if you mentioned, as I apologize, head of town is writing notes. Sorry. There's a lot of free platforms out there for surveys associated. I would definitely like to maybe see, at least from the vendors, you may already have this data, just their feedback on things of improvement. Now, if you put it out there, of course, you get the complaints all the time first, so again, a way to navigate that, but it would be nice to know on the next report, what are the vendors saying as far as, you know, things we're doing good and things to kind of prove?
Totally agree. Yeah, got to constantly have that feedback.
All right. Is documented in some type of form, you said, what now?
Oh, no, we haven't done it.
Okay, that's fine.
But that is something that's got to be a priority of ours going forward, to make sure that we're getting that feedback to keep us on our toes.
Right. My last thing is really from a capital standpoint, and thanks to the mayor's team for all the hard work they're doing. We got a lot of great utility and power providers, but, you know, act of God doesn't circumvent that. Didn't know if it's something long-term for a generator at that complex, because we host so many different events, and any event, a tree, or car, or anything would have happened to the power. And I think we had a couple of issues that occurred that couldn't be controllable, but just something to kind of look at from a capital standpoint, can we look down a road of a generator for that facility? And I know the mayor, his team is working on the parking lot in Strypin', so I won't go that piece, but thank y'all for all y'all do. Mr. President, that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Murphy. Any other comments, questions for the two gentlemen? It's an outstanding report. We too appreciate the partnership we have with you and look forward to continuing that into the future.
Thank you very much.
Thank you all. We will now have a presentation from Mindy Wyatt and her team, and I think Alan Rice will begin by introducing the city's newest project to embark upon a comprehensive plan for our parks and green space. Mr. Rice?
Thank you, Mr. President. You've just heard a magnificent report about a magnificent facility that's part of the mosaic of recreational amenities that we have in Hoover, and we are so fortunate to be where we are in terms of our community and the resources that comprise it. We have engaged in a public-private partnership. We've talked a little bit in prior meetings about signature homes and their generosity coming forward, and initiating the idea of a park-and-reck inventory where we would catalog and make sure that we are aware of all the amenities that we have for purposes of marketing the city. And that effort has grown with their support and with your very generous budgetary support to a more comprehensive park-and-reck plan. And so SFM is a tremendous partner in that. They're lending not only local, but some of their corporate expertise to that as well. Mindy Wyatt is going to introduce the consulting team that's been retained by the city, who's been visiting with us virtually for quite some time, and now they're here physically. And I want to specifically commend Erin Cobal and her leadership in park-and-reck and all of her. and all of her staff that are invested in this. And I want to commend Mindy because somebody has to make these trains run on time. And Mindy's precision as a certified project manager is really on display in this effort. And she's getting us all in the right meetings and the right conversations at the right time. And we're going to be so happy when we are able to not only catalog what we have, but talk about what we aspire to be in terms of parks and recreation, not only facilities, but programs and quality of life, things that make a difference when people select Hoover as their home. So I'll introduce Mindy and she'll take you through the team.
Good evening. Thank you for allowing us to be here today. We have had a very exciting day. We've spent about the last six weeks preparing for a two-day event that kicked off this morning and will culminate tomorrow. Today, we've gotten to hear from a lot of different stakeholders. We have a steering committee that we heard from today. And then we got to spend about three hours on three different tours out in and about our park systems, exploring different areas, and then just having some really good conversation behind this project and what we want the future of Parks and Recreation to look like. Let me keep my comments very brief. You'll see on the slide in front of you, there's five things that we would like council to know as key takeaways from this project. Number one, a comprehensive plan just really truly casts a vision. It's a 20-year living document, and it guides future development and key decisions such as setting budgets, prioritizing projects, and growing with a purpose. The city adopted a broad citywide comprehensive plan in 2019. This plan specifically focuses on community infrastructure and our recreational programs and amenities. We have a first-in-class destination. We want to be a first-in-class destination for our recreational amenities and programming to serve citizen needs and promote general health and well-being and attract businesses to Hoover. Parks and Rec is bigger than just Parks and Rec. It builds so many different things in Hoover that make this a wonderful community that we all want to be a part of. Number three is there's three focus areas. The first one is blueways and greenways. With the Cohaba River as a centerpiece of Hoover, we believe there's a lot of opportunity to connect our parks and our blueways and our greenways from not only a Hoover perspective, but also a regional perspective. The second focus area is our parks and public spaces. This area takes a look at our current physical environment and their uses and how we match our spaces and our uses and our programming to our current and future needs. And then our third focus area is recreational programming, which looks at our current programs, market trends, other communities, and staffing levels to cast a vision for what really best fits our city and our community. The next thing I'd like you to really truly understand, and if you take away one thing, it is that we are going to engage with intention. This is not a one-and-done opportunity. We could have easily gone out and created a survey, played lip service to getting feedback from the community. We have already identified over 200 different stakeholders, individuals and groups. That list is growing. We're going to engage them purposefully. We're going to go out into the community at large. We'll reach them through surveys. We'll reach them through qualitative interviews and through focus groups. And we are already starting that process with everyone here today. We have an 18-person steering committee made up of community leaders and representing a cross-section of stakeholders who are going to guide that process. We've invited them after a very long day with us already to stay today for council. So if you're from the steering committee, if you would please stand and be recognized, we'd greatly appreciate you and we appreciate your service. We can't do this without a cross-functional team. Again, Parks and Recreation is so much bigger than just Parks and Recreation. And I say just very lightly, of course. Our Economic Community Development Department and our Planning Department, and then a huge portion of our Parks and Recreation staff have been very hard at work in this. So we have a 16-member dedicated project team of various subject matter experts. And we're purposefully engaging all levels of the staff as we need to. I'd like to recognize Jonathan Belter from Signature Homes. Not only is he a project sponsor, but he has already donated countless hours to this project. He's a very key member of the project team, and we certainly could not do this without him. He brings a wealth of knowledge to our blueways and greenways area, and we appreciate his service as well. And then I'd like to recognize Lindsey Baxley and Jeremy Weiss from the Park Board. They're serving as park board liaisons to this project. I believe we also have another member from the Park Board here in the audience. So if you're from the project team, whether you work for the city or you're Park Board or Mr. Belter, please stand and be recognized. I will tell you, nobody ever gets this excited about software projects in the past. So there's a lot of energy and excitement that this team has brought. They have worked tirelessly. Anything that we've needed to do, they have plugged in and done without question, without hesitation. And we have had a wonderful day today because of everybody's efforts. We're really excited about continuing on tomorrow. So tomorrow, we'll kick off with some focus groups. Each council person has been invited to one of those focus groups, largely related to a board or something that you liaison. So we're looking forward to hosting you guys if you are able to attend. And then we have a reception tomorrow night, a kickoff reception at the Randall House to welcome you. And then finally, I'd like to introduce our external team. We were very intentional in looking for subject matter experts who specialized in comprehensive plan development and also specialized in recreational programming and strategic planning. So we have two great firms here today. Land Design is based out of Charlotte, North Carolina, specializes in land design and urban planning. Barry Dunn is based in Portland, Maine, and has a team that specializes in strategic and master planning for parks and recreation and libraries. So I'd like to invite Beth Poovey from Land Design from the podium. She's going to walk through a presentation with you guys and introduce the rest of the team. So thank you very much.
Hi, thank you for having me. I'm very excited to be here in Hoover with our team. And we'll wait for the presentation to come up.
Wendy, can you advance, please?
Yeah, it works. Great. So yes, it's great to be in Hoover. It is my first time in Hoover, and I have to tell you that it is beautiful, which I'm sure you all know that. But we have had a great day touring around and seeing some really beautiful places. So you have to be proud of that. So just to introduce the teams. I'm Beth Poovey with Land Design. I'm a landscape architect and planner, and I work for a firm called Land Design. And we do public and private development. We're engineers, civil engineers, landscape architects, planners, and branding. So we come from a perspective of really wanting to add value to your community. We want to listen to your community and make sure that whatever we're helping you plan is a reflection of the authenticity of Hoover. And we are very proud to be partnering with Barry Dunn, who is helping us. We've worked with them on several and several different other projects, and they bring a national perspective of working with communities and the programming, operations, and maintenance. So we have Art Thatcher and Lisa Wolf from Barry Dunn. And I didn't introduce the team, so I'm sorry. And there's Susan England, who's managing the project. And then we have Lee Stevens, who's also helping us in a planning perspective. So together, we create the whole team. Cannot do this without Barry Dunn. They bring lots of expertise. And I think that from both of our perspectives after being here today, just have to commend you on your staff. Like what a great asset you have, how organized they are and how much passion they're bringing into this. So seeing a lot of other communities, you've got a A-plus staff for sure. So I just want to talk real quickly about the process that we're going to be going through. You'll be seeing us over a period of about a year. So we're starting now, and it's really three different phases. So discovery is that we're here to learn about you. So what are your assets? What is your community want? What do you have in place already? And so we're really here listening and absorbing. And then the next phase is analysis where we're taking a lot of this information. We're comparing it to, like, we're comparing you to yourself, but we're comparing you to other communities as well. And we're comparing you to national standards. And then we're thinking about where's the value? Where, how can we help position you as you grow into the future? And then we want to get some feedback on that. So there's another opportunity there to, we'll give you, this is what we heard and this is what we think you can do, and what do you think about that? And then we come up with some recommendations. The reason why those three phases have like a little squiggly line going through it is that it's iterative, right? It's not just a straight linear process, but each of these phases sort of feed into each other, and there's some back and forth with that. So as Mindy told you, that there's three focus areas that we're also looking at. So we're looking at your whole system and the department, but really focused on the recreation side of the network. So what is your network? And that means your connections together. So blueways and greenways, and how are your parks and open spaces connected together? So we're going to look at that. We're going to look at your parks and how they're functioning right now and what do they have to offer and what maybe is missing, as well as programming and making sure that the programming, and this is where Barry Dunn is really bringing lots of expertise, how is your programming meeting the needs of your community now and where there might be some gaps? So when we do this, basically when we're doing public open space planning, we're really thinking about getting information in lots of different ways. So whether it's qualitative, as we're having conversations over today and tomorrow, getting, listening to folks and hearing things, but also quantitative data. So measuring, measuring what you have, comparing you to standards, but also doing a statistically valid survey. So we're going to have lots of opportunity for community input throughout the various stages. But part of that is a statistically valid survey that's sort of separate. So we can make sure that we're measuring, we're being representative of the community and making sure we're hearing from all community members. And then our observations, as having done this with lots of different communities, we want to make sure that we're giving you our expertise and thinking about what we're seeing. So again, the social context of like, how do your parks and open space and program, how does that build community? How does that help create social cohesion? Those are some of the things that we're going to be thinking about and learning about, as well as the physical spaces. So those are the parks, those are the facilities, and those are also the things that aren't there yet, like some extra greenways or blueways and how they're all connected together. So that the physical space. And then also, how are you functioning? How is the department doing? And how are your partnerships working? And what other partnerships can we bring in? And what are the opportunities to really enhance the parks and open spaces through the, improve your quality of life of living in Hoover through the functionality of these open spaces? We want to make sure that we're building off of what you've already said through your comprehensive plan. So this is a slide from your comprehensive plan or a piece, a snapshot of what you talked about as Hoover, the exceptional city, and the goals that were identified. We think of a park and open space system as part of your infrastructure, like your roads are infrastructure, your stormwater and your sewer. They're all part of infrastructure, same as a park and open space, something that everyone should have access to. We want to make sure that we're thinking about this cohesively with all of the goals. And then we have tools in place to help us think about how you're comparing nationally and how you're comparing to other communities your size. So this is just a quick snapshot of, we look at the National Recreation and Park. NRPA has a lot of data to help you understand how you compare to other communities that are similar in size and similar in budgets. So you compare, you want to set your own goals, but you do want to use that as just a tool. And so this slide is looking at budgets, residents per park. So where you see the bold numbers, that's Hoover. And then LQ is lower quartile, medium, and then upper quartile. So this is just a quick snapshot right now of how you're doing, and we'll continue to look through that. But overall, we want to make sure that we're looking at this as a system-wide, regional perspective and how we can really enhance your vision going forward. And with that, I think I have done. Entertain any questions? We're really excited to be working with you over the next several months.
Any questions from the members on what we've seen and heard?
Mr. President, there's one question in the slide. Prior, is that comparable to other trails within the city? Or is this comparable? What is that stating?
So that's stating that right now you have 25.9 miles of trail. And compared to other communities your size, you're in, you're ahead. So that's including trails that are within parks.
Right. And you can just give me later, I just would like to know like who we compare with those peers.
Yeah, so these are self-reported peers, self-reported.
Yeah, but.
Communities your size.
Yeah, so if I could just get who we compare to, that'd be great. But that looks good. Thank you.
Well, we look forward to hear from all of y'all tomorrow, hopefully that you'll come to the focus group.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you all. All right, that brings us to the end of our presentations. Before we get to our agenda, I failed last week to thank the Hoover Beautification Board. All the decorations you see, both in the chamber and throughout City Hall, are compliments of an incredible amount of hard work by the beautification board. They spend all day, one day a year up here working on this. So for you and I to enjoy it, and I know they're probably not here, maybe they're watching online, but will you enjoy, join me in thanking them for this? They do a fantastic job. We'll now move to our consent agenda, a rather short consent, only three items tonight. The consent agenda has presented items six, seven, and eight that the council will consider with one block vote. There will be no discussion of these items unless, of course, a member or a member of the public wishes to remove an item off of the consent. So I will begin by asking members of the body, item six, seven, or eight, is there a member who would like to remove one of these items to move to the regular agenda? Hearing none, how about a member of the public? If you are here to speak on behalf of item six, seven, or eight, we'll be happy to move that to the regular agenda. Seeing none from the public, Mr. Corley, if you'll read the items.
Item number six is the approval of minutes from the September 15, 2022 work session and the September 19, 2022 meeting. Item number seven, resolution 684222, authorizes Mayor Brokato or his designated to enter into an agreement with East Coast Professional Baseball Showcase, Inc. for the limited purpose of holding events and to execute any and all documents necessary for such agreement. Resolution 684322 authorizes Mayor Brokato or his designated to execute an agreement with Sutton Corporation for the purchase of fire apparatus for one ladder truck and one engine.
Mr. President, a move for approval of the consent agenda.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay. The ayes have it, and the motion carries. We will now move to the regular agenda, beginning with item number nine, resolution 6844-22. Mr. Corley.
This resolution declares a weed and other vegetation nuisance and directs the abatement of such nuisance pursuant to Alabama law at the following location in the city of Hoover, specifically 3416 Cedar Crest Circle.
Mr. President, a move for approval of resolution number 6844-22.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments from the body? Any questions or comments from the public? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay. The ayes have it, and the motion carries. Item number 10 is an ordinance number 22-2587. Mr. Corley.
This ordinance provides for an inter-local cooperation agreement between the city of Hoover and Shelby County, Alabama, for the benefit of both entities to allow the fleet department of each entity to use the space, tools, and equipment of the other as available in the event of a catastrophic event that renders such entity's normal facility inoperable.
Mr. President, a move for adoption of ordinance number 22-2587.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for adoption of the ordinance. Any questions or comments from the body? Questions or comments from the audience? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Posey?
Aye.
Mr. Sweeney?
Aye.
Ms. Driver?
Aye.
Mr. Murphy?
Aye.
Dr. Middlebrooks?
Aye.
Mr. McClintock?
Aye.
Mr. Leiter?
Aye. With a vote of seven ayes and zero nays, the motion carries and the ordinance is adopted. Item number 11 is resolution number 6845-22. Mr. Corley.
This resolution authorizes Mayor Brokato to execute an agreement with Ratliff Partners LLC for the purchase of property located at 3021 Lorna Road, Hoover, Alabama, and to execute any and all documents necessary to effectuate such transaction.
Mr. President, a move for approval of resolution number 6845-22.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for approval. Any questions or comments from members of the body? Any questions or comments from members of the audience? Seeing none, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay. The ayes have it, and the motion carries. Item number 12 is a resolution 6846-22. Mr. Corley.
This resolution amends the budget for the fiscal year ending September 30, 2023, as set forth in Exhibit A to the resolution.
Mr. President, a move for approval of resolution number 6846-22.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for approval of the resolution. Any questions or comments from the members? Questions or comments from members of the public tonight? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay. The ayes have it, and the motion carries. Item number 13, resolution 6847-22. Mr. Corley.
This resolution amends the budget for fiscal year ending September 30, 2023, as set forth in Exhibit A.
Mr. President, a move for approval of a resolution number 6847-22.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments from the body on that item? Any questions or comments from members of the public on the item?